Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Barry. You may know me from the community. I've been a resident of the town of New Palt since 1995. I currently serve on the town board for the town of New Palt. I am here today expressing my views as a resident of the town and not necessarily as a town board member. About three weeks ago, certain representatives of the New Palt Central School District came to the town board and made a presentation about a $52.9 million capital project, which is proposed to start in the next two years. It involves substantial reconstruction of the middle school as well as additions of additional square footage to both the middle school and the high school. I'm here today to give you information which I think is relevant to your decision-making on this issue. There is a bond vote scheduled for October 28th, 2014 at the high school. The polls will be open between 12 noon on that day and 9:00 PM. And I think it's very important that you go and vote with respect to this particular bond vote. I want you to know that the information that I'm presenting to you today, I obtained from various sites, predominantly the New Palt Central School District website. And if you want to follow along or do your own due diligence, I encourage you to do so. What you can do is go to the district website. There's three locations on that website that I think you should look at. If you go to their homepage, there's a direct link on the left-hand side for the 2014 capital project. You can click on that link, and then there's another link for capital plan assessment. I suggest that you click on that link. You will find on that one sheet of paper, the district's view of this particular project. In fact, it'll show you how the district calculated the $52.9 million of renovation and new construction that this project will bring to the community, as well as the cost to the community. There are a couple of statements made on that capital assessment form that are concerning to me. One is that the project costs will result in a 1% tax increase. I will go over in this presentation with the actual means to you, and as opposed to what you think it might mean. I also direct your attention to the bottom of that particular document, which shows that the actual market value or assessed, or the actual appraised value of the middle school is $5,250,000. The second source of information, if you go to the homepage and click on "Our District", and then click on the link for "Board of Education", you'll see a link on the left-hand side of the page called Comprehensive Facilities Master Plan. I suggest you look at that document as well. That shows you the history of the school district deliberations about all of our schools and about how they arrived at the current plan that they're putting up for vote on October 28th. If you look at that document, you'll see on pages four and six, certain references to why they decided to continue with a four-school plan. And on page 19 through 22 or 23, you'll see a breakdown of their numbers. When they were considering how to approach the public on this particular plan, they identified in the facilities plan the total cost of infrastructure improvements and new space to be created to try to bring some of the schools up to the 21st century educational model. You'll see that there were three options they considered, and they finally chose the third option, which involves basically adding 38,000 square feet to the middle school and reconstructing that building and getting the bulk of the $52.9 million. The middle school will get approximately $35 million of the $52.9 million bond. Also on the homepage, if you go to the budget information on the homepage, you can click on the links for line-by-line budget information and for the revenue budget. So the numbers that I'm using today, I've gotten from the school district's website in terms of revenue and expense, as well as the comprehensive master plan, which was adopted by the entire school board in February 2014, and as well as the information they provided the public in terms of the capital project itself. So now, what I want to do is get into the actual project itself. But before we do that, there's some basic information I think each of you need to know so that you can thoroughly understand the numbers that I'll be presenting to you today. In this first slide, I am presenting to you the information that's on the website concerning the 2014-15 school budget that was adopted by the school board. The total budget is $53,900,000. Now, how is that $53 million paid? It's paid with a combination of sources of funds. First, the school district receives gross state aid in the amount of $13,636,000. There's other revenue they receive, and you'll see this on the revenue budget itself, of $1,064,000. They used the fund balance. They used the unused portion of funds that haven't been spent from prior budget years. It's in an unappropriated fund balance line. So they used $1.2 million of their savings to offset the budget hit for last year. And the tax levy itself, and this is the number I want you to focus on. The tax levy, that's the amount of money they raise through taxes that you and I pay as real property taxes for schools, is $38 million. So for purposes of this discussion, I want you to understand that 1% of the tax levy is equal to $380,000. So we'll translate the cost of this project in terms of percentage of the tax levy. So a 1% increase in the tax levy is $380,000, and that represents a 1% increase of your taxes. So I'll show you how we tie this in with future slides. All right, so we all realize that 1% of the tax levy is $380,000. Now let's look at some historical information and some other data to put this project into context. This particular sheet shows you recent increases in the tax levy. So what I did was, I went back to the budgets that are online, back to 2009 and '10, got this information from the school district website. And you can see that the tax levy for 2009 and '10, the actual tax warrant amount, was $28,987,000. 2010 and '11 went up to $29,842,000. 2011 and '12, $31,165,000. And 2012 and '13, if you can see the top line, it's expressed in thousands. So it's $32,229,000, so on and so forth. And this year, the total tax warrant amount, the amount you and I pay, $35,100,000. So the increase from 2009 to '10, total increase, has been 20.35%. Now, so that's historic. What I've done is, I've now projected what the increases in the taxes will be over the next seven years, six years, strike that, using the average increase. So if you go down to Roman number two, I took the 20.35% and divided it by five years because that's where the data came from. So the average annual increase in the tax levy has been 4.07%. So what happens between now and 2020-21? Well, if we have the school budget increase, the cost of the school budget increase at the same rate, you're going to see that your taxes next year will go up by 4.07, and then the following year with an additional 4.07, they'll be up 8.14. And with the following year with an additional 4.07, they'll be up a total of 12.21. And the following year with an additional 4.07, they'll be 16.28. And then so on and so forth. So by 2021, just from normal increases in the operational budget, your real property taxes, your school taxes, will go up 24.42%. All right, so the first slide basically dealt with what you're looking at in the future in terms of operational increases. This next slide is a schedule of enrollment at the schools, both at the present time and as projected in 2020. I got this information from the Facilities Master Plan that I talked to you about earlier. It's online. It's on page four. And this Facilities Master Plan was adopted by the school board on February 26, 2014. I think it's relevant because we have to determine whether our resources are being spent wisely. So at Duzene, the current enrollment is 431 students. Lenape, 490. Middle school, 566. And the high school, 765. Again, all information from the school district itself. They are projecting by 2020 that Duzene's enrollment will go up slightly by 1.8%. Lenape's enrollment will go down slightly by 1.6%. The middle school enrollment will go down by 8.7%, and the high school will go up by a total of 3%. And I'll show you how this ties in to where the resources are being spent on this capital project in the next couple of slides. All right, this slide shows the current square footage at our schools and the proposed square footage at our schools after construction of some additional space at the high school and 38,000 new square feet at the middle school. So Duzene currently has 61,500 square feet. Lenape, 92,815. The middle school, 106,210. And the high school has the greatest amount of space at 145,35 square feet. Now, the high school houses four grades. The middle school houses three grades. So the proposal, this capital project proposal, has the school district adding 2,100 square feet to Duzene, 38,150 square feet to the middle school, and then 14,175 square feet to the high school. And as you can see, that's a percentage increase at Duzene of only 3%. No percentage increase at Lenape because there's not any square footage there. A 36% increase in the square footage at the middle school and a 9.8% increase at the high school. Again, this data comes from the Educational Facilities Master Plan. It's on page 19, and you can get to that link as I described earlier. And now, we're going to focus in the next part of this slide on the actual square footage per student. So currently at Duzene, there's 142.9 square feet. And then Lenape at 189, middle school at 187, and the high school 189. That's per student. After the project is completed, if it's completed, the square footage at Duzene will go up slightly per student, at Lenape, 192.56. As you can see, the middle school is going to go up to 271.5 square feet per student. And then the high school would only be 202. And if you want to do some quick math, if you take the difference between the new square footage at the middle school and the square footage at the high school, you take that 69 square feet and multiply it by the number of students that'll be at the middle school at that time, which is about 517, that equation results in approximately 35,000 additional square feet, which is quite frankly, the same square footage they're adding as a result of this project. Now, as you'll remember from the prior middle school bond vote, that proposal involved the students at the school being moved to a school that had been abandoned by the city of Kingston School District. It was actually located in Tilson. The new plan is actually to add the 38,000 square feet to the existing middle school building and then move the student population into that space while they refurbish the rest of the building. Quite frankly, I have some questions about why you need to add this square footage to the middle school, 38,000 additional square feet. It seems to me that in the final analysis, you will have an abundance of excess square footage when you're done. So now, this slide identifies the infrastructure repairs that the school board has identified at all of our schools. Again, taking this information from page 19 of the Comprehensive Facilities Master Plan adopted by the school board. And if you look at the project itself, the proposal that the school board first considered involved spending approximately $71 million to improve classroom space at all the schools and to complete the basic infrastructure repairs that have been identified in all four schools. So what I've done is, I've looked at the way they structured this particular bond vote and analyzed how they are devoting their resources to the four schools. And I've come up with this chart. And it shows that because the school is not going to complete all of the work that they initially intended, and to explain that, let me regress a little bit. The school board decided to try to split the improvements and the repairs into two phases. Phase one would be a 2014 bond referendum. Phase two would be a 2017 bond referendum. Between the two referenda, they would be able to complete the classroom improvements and repair the infrastructure. Recently, they elected to drop phase two, so they're just going to complete phase one. And in the process, they're not going to complete some of the basic infrastructure work that they identified in their own report. And I'm showing you that here. So again, I'm taking this information from the school board's Facilities Master Plan. They identified that Duzene would need approximately $2 million in infrastructure repairs. Lenape, $3 million. The middle school, slightly more than $8 million. You see the top lines there. And the high school would need $9.5 million of infrastructure repair work. Since they're only doing phase one, the infrastructure work that will be completed at Duzene is $1.6 million, which is 74% completion of infrastructure, only leaving 26% of the infrastructure remaining uncompleted or incomplete at Duzene. Lenape, same analysis. Of the $3 million identified in infrastructure needs, they're going to complete with this bond vote, 879,000, leaving $2,182,000 not completed, representing 71% of the infrastructure repairs they identified. The middle school, they're completing almost all of the infrastructure work, only leaving 9% not completed. But at the high school, they're only going to complete $4,707,000 worth of infrastructure repairs, leaving the balance to be completed at some time in the future. So the high school actually has 51% of the infrastructure repair work identified in their facilities report that will not be completed as part of this particular project. You might want to ask yourself, why are you putting forward a project which again, doesn't complete all the basic infrastructure work at all the schools? Just one point of clarification for all of you. Out of the $52.9 million bond project, only $1,006,000 will be devoted to Duzene, 879,000 to Lenape, $7.424 million to the middle school, and $4.707. The rest of the money that's part of that project is to add the 38,000 square feet to the middle school as new space. So that's an additional cost well above just basic infrastructure and to add additional square footage at the high school. So this is just basic infrastructure that will be part of the $52.9 million bond project. All right, so we've reviewed what the operational budget will hold for us going forward in terms of our tax increases over time at 4.07% a year. We've looked at the enrollment, and we've seen that in some schools, enrollment is going up slightly. In some schools, it's going down, and the middle school going down the most. And we've also seen that the infrastructure work that needs to be done at all of our schools will not quite be completed, even with this $52.9 million bond project. So with that as the background, let's get into this particular project itself. We're going to go over some terms and try to explain to you how we arrive at our numbers and to give you an idea of what the impact this project will have above, above and beyond the impact that the normal operational increases in the school budget will have on you and your ability to continue to live in New Palt. So the school board wants you to vote yes on a project. It's a $52.9 million capital project that's up for vote on October 28th. So in order to finance $52.9 million of construction, you have to go out and borrow money. And I've used the assumptions that the school board has made on their capital assessment sheet, which you can find on the website, on the homepage on their 2014 capital project. You can click on the link for the actual assessment form. So the project with interest is going to cost $70,527,98, which will be paid over approximately 20 years. The annual cost to taxpayers is a calculation. So how much of that $70 million are we going to be responsible for as taxpayers? In order to figure that out, we need to solve this equation. So the annual cost to taxpayers equals the annual cost of the debt or bond less the annual state aid we receive from the state education department. So what we know is, we know one of those numbers already, and this is a number I got from the school district itself. We know that the annual bond payment on $70,520,000 worth of debt will be $4,337,855 per year during the life of the bond. So to complete the equation and find out what the annual taxpayer cost will be, we have to make a determination of what the state aid will be that we'll receive on an annual basis. So the way this works is, the bond project, the actual construction itself, has to be approved by the state education department. And what happens is, that school officials will sit down with facilities officials at the state education department, review the proposal, and then the facilities department will determine how much state aid the project is eligible for. And there's a very specific calculation for that. Once the facilities plan is adopted by SED, the state education department, it's sent to a different department for the actual calculation of the annual state aid the school district will receive. Now, there is a representative assigned to the New Palt Central School District for building projects. And I spoke to Jean Bedett, that's her name. I spoke to her approximately 20 times during the last three weeks. This is the person that school officials need to sit down with and review their construction plans in order to come to some understanding of what the actual amount of state aid they will be receiving on a project like this. And I can tell you that when I first spoke to Jean Bedett, she hadn't heard from anybody from the school district. Hadn't heard from the architects, hadn't heard from any school officials about the project. She wasn't even aware there was a project. In fact, one school official did speak to her recently, only asking her general questions about state aid. But essentially, if you're in the business of financing a project, you would think that you'd want to speak to your banker about how much of a loan you're going to get from them in order to know what your actual costs are going to be. Well, it's similar here. We as the taxpayers need to rely on the school district in terms of their state aid assumptions in order to know what the actual cost of this bond will be to us on an annual basis. And we need to rely on the school district for that information. And I can tell you that you shouldn't rely on the school district for their information because their information is based on strictly assumptions that have been made by the business department, not on any tangible feedback that they have gotten from the state education department or Jean Bedett, who's in charge of any construction project that we have in the New Palt Central School District. So what this particular slide shows you is that there is an actual miscalculation that was made on a set of documents that were delivered to me by the school district. And I will show you those documents in further slides. But the school district's going to take this $52.9 million project and actually finance it in the form of two debt instruments. One is going to be a bond for $15,500,000, which will be payable over 20 years. And the annual payment for that bond will be $1,090,597. The state aid that was calculated by the school district on that payment is $431,876. But that's an incorrect calculation. And the reason for that is, Mr. Linden at the school determined what the bond amount would be with interest, which is the annual payment of that bond, which is the $1,000,000, the $1,090,000, and took 39.6% of that number, which is an incorrect calculation. State aid is given on the building aid portion. An interest adjustment is made on only the building aid portion that you get from the state education department. So you actually get interest on the state aid portion at an assumed interest rate, which is 2.25% per year. So Mr. Linden didn't figure that into his calculation. So the actual state aid that we'll get on that $15,500,000 bond is $381,396 per year, not $431,876. The same is true with the second bond that he intends to take out. Again, they total the 52.9, but this 37.4 is for reconstruction. So again, a 3.5%. This will be a 15-year payback. And so the total payment on that is $32,472,58, $3,247,000. He calculated state aid on that figure. He came up with a figure of $1,948,355. Again, this is an incorrect calculation. The amount of state aid that we will be receiving on the $37,400,000 bond will be $1,764,012. So the difference between Mr. Linden's assumptions and the actual calculation is $234,793 per year. So as a recap, I'm going to take you through what the school district is saying. The school district is saying phase one on the tax levy. The one bond cost will be $1,090,597. The other bond cost will be $3,247,258. That's how we get back to this total cost of the project on an annual basis, which was in a prior slide, which is $4,337,855. That's the cost on an annual basis of borrowing $52.9 million over 15 and 20 years. All right? So now, Mr. Linden and the school district and the school board is saying that we believe that we're going to get state aid of $431,000 and change on the one bond and $1,948 on the other for a total state aid number of $1,957,624. The corrected projections however, show that we'll be getting actually less state aid, which means that the actual cost to the taxpayers will not be $1,957,624 as Mr. Linden suggests. It will actually be $2,192,447. So the actual taxpayer cost, using Mr. Linden's numbers, is $1,009. The corrected numbers is $2.192,447. So what does that mean to you? Remember back on the first slide, we said that 1% of the tax levy is $380,000. Well, just assuming that Mr. Linden's numbers are correct, and I will show you why they're not in future slides, just using his assumptions, that number on an annual basis would result in a tax increase based on the current tax levy. Remember, 1% equals $380,000. So you take the $1,957,624 and divide it by $380,000. The project results in a tax increase to the community of 5.15%. Now, with the corrected numbers, with the correct amount of state aid, the number is actually higher. It's 5.77%. Now, what I'm going to do in the next slide is show you that Mr. Linden and the school board made another assumption. And if that assumption does not prove to be true, then the actual amount of the increase will be much higher than the 5.77% I show on this slide. And I'll introduce that on the next slide. All right, so on the last slide, we showed that using the school board's assumption that the actual cost to the taxpayer in terms of an increase in the tax levy would be 5.3%. And I showed you with just the one correction of the calculation, it's actually going to be higher at 5.7%. Now, let's look at another set of assumptions that Mr. Linden and the school board made in arriving at their number, that $1,957,000 number that appeared on the last page. So just recapping, state aid on the $15.5 million bond is not going to be $431,000. It's going to be $381,396. And I will use that number throughout the rest of these calculations. So on the $15.5 million bond, I'm confident that the amount of state aid from that bond will be $381,396. However, on the other bond, the 37.4, and again, the school board wants and again, the school board, once this fifty-two point nine million dollar project is approved, should it be approved, has the ability to finance it any way they want. So for purposes of this discussion, Mr. Linden has told me that he's going to finance it by having two separate borrowings. One for fifteen million five hundred thousand, okay, which will be a twenty-year amortization, and the other for thirty-seven four. I want you to focus on the thirty-seven million four hundred thousand dollar bond, which is at the bottom of this sheet. Now, the school board projected that the state aid on that bond would be one point nine four eight three five five per year. Now, that assumption is based upon the fact that the full thirty-seven million four hundred thousand dollars is aidable by the State Education Department. And that is a flawed assumption. The State Education Department, after they review the plans and specs for this project, as well as the new construction, might determine on the reconstruction work that the school district will not receive building aid on a hundred percent of those dollars. So once again, Mr. Linden is assuming that the school district will be aided at a hundred percent of the thirty-seven million four hundred thousand. So you would calculate your state aid on that figure times what our school district gets as a building aid ratio. Because we are considered an affluent school district, we as a school district get sixty point seven percent reimbursement from the State Education Department on whatever aidable amount they determine in their calculation. So, on the fifteen million five hundred thousand dollar bond, Mr. Linden assumed that two-thirds of that amount would be aidable. And then he, he applied our school district ratio to that number of sixty point seven percent to come up with the amount of state aid he believed he would get. So we went over that. The same applies to the second bond for thirty-seven four. If Mr. Linden's assumptions are incorrect, that we are not going to get a hundred percent aid on that bond, then the amount and cost to you will increase. So what this shows you is the corrected district projection on the amount of state aid that we get on this bond, as shown in the total on the prior, on the prior slide. And if we're going to get ten percent less aid on this bond, then the number associated with ninety percent aidable is one six. So instead of getting one nine from the state, we get one six. If it's ninety percent aidable, if it's eighty percent aidable, I'm sorry, if it's eighty percent aidable, we get one four. If it's seventy percent aidable, we get one two. And if it's only sixty percent aidable, we get one million seventy thousand dollars. So, without even talking to state aid about this particular project, about his ability to get, or can capture a hundred percent state aid on that thirty-seven million four hundred thousand dollar bond, Mr. Linden and the school district has, has made an assumption. And the assumption is, we're going to get one nine four eight three five five. As I said before, that number's incorrect, it's actually one seven eight four five nine two. But if the SED decides that that project isn't a hundred percent aidable, you'll see that the amount of state aid for that one bond goes down pretty significantly. So now, if we pan to the top, I'll show you what the impact of that reduced aid on the second bond might mean to you. So, at the top, I've basically laid out the state aid assumptions. Remember, the annual bond payment is what's in the left-hand column there. That's going to be constant, that's that four million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. The state aid shown in column two is the combination of the state aid that you get from the fifteen point five million dollar bond. So that column is the sum of the three hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars shown just below, as well as the sum of these numbers. So, the, the project cost to the community on a corrected basis is five point seven seven percent. And that is because the net taxpayer cost on the corrected district projection is two million one hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars. You take that annual net cost to the taxpayer and divide it by one percent of the tax levy, which is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the actual cost of the project to the taxpayers is five point seven seven percent. That's a five point seven seven percent increase in your tax rate. Now, if Mr. Linden gets ten percent less state aid on that second bond, it's going to mean that your annual payment is not two point one nine million, but two point three five oh million, leading to a six point one nine percent increase. And if Mr. Linden and the school board is wrong, and you only get eighty percent of the aid you think, which is a twenty percent reduction in his assumption, then the cost goes higher. It's a six point six percent increase, and so on and so forth. So what I'm trying to, to tell the community is that the actual cost of this project, despite what they may say to you in literature, is going to be at least five point seven seven, and probably much higher. Probably up to maybe seven percent. So just from this project. So if you take that seven percent and add it to your normal operational increases over the next six years, which we said was approximately twenty-four percent, in six years with this project, you can expect to pay about thirty-one percent more in school taxes. And now I'm going to move on to the next slide. Alright, so this is a, an actual chart that I received from the school district. And it lays out the information I just described. As you can see, this is Mr. Linden's generated worksheet for the project. It shows on the left-hand side a fifteen point five million dollar twenty-year bond, and on the right-hand side a fifteen-year thirty-seven point four million dollar bond. And it shows you what the principal and interest payments are. First column, total payments, then interest, then principal, and finally to his state aid assumption. So, looking at the first bond, you can see that he assumed that two-thirds of the fifteen point five million dollars would be aidable. And then he applied the school district's building aid ratio of sixty percent to that. It's actually sixty point seven percent. But he used sixty percent to come up with a forty-one, four hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollar figure, which I told you in the prior slide, is actually incorrect. And you can see on the right-hand side with the thirty-seven million four hundred thousand dollar bond, the annual payment is three million two hundred and forty-seven thousand and change. It shows principal and interest, and again, his calculation of aid. And as you can see on this, he's saying that a hundred percent of that thirty-seven million four hundred thousand is aidable. And then he's applying the school district's building aid ratio to that number. And then, so he, he takes the building, the state aid on that, which is one million nine hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-five, and subtracts it from the payment to come up with the, the net cost to the taxpayers. So, the information that I expressed and displayed in my prior slides actually came from information that was given to me by the school district, and this is one of those documents. And I will show you the, the next document that I received in just a second. So as, as I said to you on the prior slides, the actual cost of the project is anywhere between five point seven seven percent as a tax increase, up to seven percent. So that's the actual cost of the project. Now, what I'm going to do is examine some other data that will tie into how the school district is marketing this particular proposal. And as you can see, that this is a chart of the net debt retirement for the school district over the next several years. So the current net debt on the books is a million sixty-nine thousand four oh nine. And basically, if you can look at the bottom of that sheet, you'll see that that's as of two thousand fourteen and fifteen. There are three bonds that we currently pay on. That total, two, two million six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. That's principal and interest on all three bonds. And if you go to the revenue budget for this year, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, you'll see that the school district received on those bonds one million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars in building aid, leaving a net long-term debt to the district of a million sixty-nine thousand four hundred and nine dollars. Well, next year, that debt, long-term debt, will go down to eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, representing a two hundred and nine thousand dollar reduction. Again, in two thousand, between two thousand eighteen and nineteen, and two thousand nineteen and twenty, there'll be a further reduction in net debt from eight sixty to five thirty, which is a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar reduction. Two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three to two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, an additional three hundred and eighty-seven thousand in reduction. Two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine will be a ninety-three thousand dollar reduction. And then again, after that, there's a final fifty thousand dollar reduction. So, this is current debt on the books, it shows how it's being retired. Now, what's that really mean to us? Well, if the operational budget is going to go up at its normal rate next year, this money that would be available, the two hundred and nine thousand four hundred and nine dollars, could be used to offset the hit to the taxpayers on that, on next year's budget. So, if next year's budget stayed the same, and there wasn't any additional cost, we'd have two hundred and nine thousand dollars extra leftover, which means that the school board could reduce your taxes by less than one percent. Remember that three hundred and eighty thousand dollars represents one percent of the tax levy. So this two hundred and nine thousand dollars would be about point six six percent tax reduction. Again, the next reduction would be about a one percent tax reduction. And then the third reduction would be over a one percent, slightly over one percent, and so on and so forth. So, what, what I'm showing to you with this slide is that over time, retiring debt has a benefit to taxpayers. It can either result in a reduction of your tax payment or serve as a buffer to offset a hit being a spike in a cost to the school district for, for say pension benefits or medical insurance. So this year, the town board is, has to pay four hundred thousand dollars for police retirement contributions, which is two hundred and forty thousand dollars higher than what we paid last year. If we pass those costs on to the taxpayers, we'd have about a four percent increase in town taxes. So we have to find ways to save money in other areas, so we don't pass that on to you. The same would be true of the school district. As this debt gets retired, it serves as a buffer for future hits in terms of increased cost, unanticipated increased cost in their operational budget. But this is not how the school district is approaching this. They're actually going to use the retirement of debt service as a vehicle for offsetting what the hit will be to you on this project. And I'll show that to you in the next slide. Okay, so before we get to the slide that kind of describes how the school district is marketing this particular project, I want to just direct your attention to the relationship between the current net debt. When I say current net debt, I'm referring to net debt after this year. So next year in two thousand fifteen and sixteen, the school district will have net debt of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, what does this new debt, what kind of an impact does the new debt have on us as taxpayers? Well, again, Mr. Linden is projecting that by two thousand seventeen and eighteen, the amount of school district debt is going to be one point nine million dollars. And that's a two point seven six percent increase in terms of the tax levy. And the way you calculate that is you take the one million nine hundred and ten thousand, you subtract the existing debt of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you take that product and divide it by the tax levy, which is three hundred and eighty thousand, and it's an increase of two point seven six percent based on the district projections. Now, let's tie in how some of the assumptions and, and, and calculation errors, how they kind of tie into this going forward. So, remember from the prior slide that Mr. Linden calculated the amount of building aid incorrectly, as I previously described. So, really, the net debt will be two point one seven one eight six five, which is a three point four five percent increase off the current debt level. And if he doesn't get a hundred percent of the building aid on that thirty-seven million four hundred thousand dollar bond, and only gets ninety percent, because, don't forget, his numbers are based upon assumptions that haven't been confirmed by the State Education Department, then the tax increase is three point nine two percent off the current debt level of eight sixty, and so on and so forth. So, assuming that we get a eighty percent aid on the thirty-seven million four hundred thousand dollar bond, the increase in the amount of debt that will be paid annually will increase from the current level, eight hundred and sixty thousand, to two point, two, two million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Now, that's a four point four percent increase from the debt level of two thousand and fifteen and sixteen. So everybody sees that. In order to finance the project, assuming we get eighty percent aid on that thirty-seven million four hundred thousand dollars, is going to require our school district to pay two million five hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars a year in debt, which is an increase over current debt of eight hundred and sixty thousand by four point four percent. Okay, so your tax levy will increase four point four percent if you assume the relationship between current debt and future debt. And I'm going to tie in, in the next slide, why that's relevant. Alright, this is another document that I received from the school district. And it basically shows you how the school district plans to finance this project. And it also explains, to some extent, why they're saying that this project will result in only a one percent tax increase. If you read the fine print, it's a one percent tax increase after retirement of existing debt. So taxpayers don't understand that, but I've done the calculations, I've showed you what the actual cost of the project is. And I'm trying to tie that into how the school district has marketed this plan. So, on this particular sheet, Mr. Linden and the school district shows on the left-hand side the current budget debt for two thousand fourteen and fifteen, how it goes down. The monthly, or the annual payments go down from two seven to one seven. So in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, the annual payment is one seven, but they receive eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars in state aid. So next year, the net debt in the school district is the eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars I showed you in the prior slide. So, how is it that the school district can say that this plan will result only in a one percent increase? Well, it's really kind of financial engineering. If you look at what the school district shows as the current net debt, that's an incorrect figure. And I'll, I'll explain why it's incorrect. But for now, what the school district, district is saying is if you add one percent of the existing tax levy, which is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to this figure, that's the increase the project will have for the life of the project. So it bumps this up to almost one nine, and they try to carry this debt level at one nine all the way through. But don't forget, this, these numbers are based upon an initial miscalculation by Mr. Linden in terms of building aid. And these numbers also assume that the thirty-seven million four hundred thousand dollar bond is a hundred percent aidable. If it's not, then these numbers are going to be dramatically different. So, what the school district's saying, if you add one percent of that, that's as high as the debt level is going to get. It's kind of masking for the public the real cost of the project. And I'll explain that. This is the actual net debt. If you look at total debt from the three bonds on the last page of the line-by-line school budget for two thousand fourteen, which is on their website, and subtract the building aid shown on the revenue budget, which is also part of the website, the actual net debt is that number. It's one million sixty-nine thousand. Now, what Mr. Linden and the school district propose to do is, they want to show this, they're going to borrow a million dollars next year to bump this up to one nine, because, don't forget, next year the net debt is eight hundred and sixty thousand. So what they want to do is borrow a million fifty thousand dollars to kick this up so that their statement is true, that it only adds one percent to their, this number. So, what that means is, he's borrowing the money just to bump up the amount of debt to one nine. He obviously pays that debt off because the following year, he's borrowing a million fifty again, and the net debt is remaining the same. So, it's kind of a financial ploy to keep this number at one nine, and then tries to keep it at one nine all the way through. The net effect is that you're not retiring principal on a fully amortized basis. So, remember, the cost of the project is four million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand and change a month, or a year, rather. He's only paying, on the first year, three four, three four, three seven. So he never gets to that four million three hundred thousand dollar figure because he's trying to limit the total amount of debt to the school district on an annual basis. to the school district on an annual basis. The net result is that he has to extend the life of the loan for additional time, resulting in an increase to the taxpayer. So, this is very complicated and convoluted. But I just, I'm trying to show you that the actual debt next year is 860. This number is going to be higher than that, and the actual increase is what I've shown you on the prior slides. Just because they financially engineered a 1% increase in this number doesn't mean it's not going to cost you anymore in the future. All right, so to sum up to this point in time, what's important is for the school district to be transparent with taxpayers, to let taxpayers know what the actual cost of a project means to them, especially in relationship to normal operational budget increases over time. So, it would be nice if the school district could project that for us and tell us that my assumptions about future tax increases are wrong. Again, I use that 4.07% increase in normal operational expenses. We're going to add to that the cost of this project. And it's my opinion that if you take the cost of this project and add it to an average annual increase that we get from the operational budget, that you're going to have a spike of anywhere between 8 to 10% in one year. And that will come in the next couple of years. And then, the school district will backpedal and try to explain to you how that happened. I'm trying to explain it to you in advance. And I think it's important for the, for the school district not to try to sell us by making statements that it's only going to result in a 1% increase. That's not true. We know that. We know that if you're going to try to finance $2.2 million or $2.3 million in annual net debt, you take that number, divide it by the 1% of the school tax levy, that's the actual cost of that project to the community, no matter how you financially engineer it. So, one of the last points I want to make to you is that the school district makes these statements. And I can't understand why they make them, because it's just not possible. So, recently, you all may have received a six, approximately a six-page marketing pamphlet from the school district about the project. And if you were to turn to the last page, I believe it's the last page, which I'm showing you now, if you go down to this line down here, it says that for the average taxpayer, this will result in an annual investment of $20 per $100,000 of assessment value for the term of the bond. So, let's, let's look at this a little bit more. So, they're saying for every $100,000 of assessment you have for your real estate, it's going to be $20 times the term of the bond. So, let's do the math. Let's assume you have $100,000 taxable value in your home. They're saying it's going to cost you $20 for 20 years. That's $20 per year for 20 years, which is $400. Seems like a pretty reasonable cost. But how did they come to this calculation? Let me show you the calculation I made and compare it to their calculation, and let's see if we can have some transparency. All right. So, if you go to the school district website and you look at the revenue budget for 2014-'15, you'll see that the school district raised pursuant to the tax warrant, $35,100,000. They also received reimbursement for the star exemption, which brought the total up to a total tax levy of $38 million. But for our purposes, it's what's in the warrant. The warrant consisted of $35,100,000. That's what we all contributed to. So, I confirm today that the cost per thousand for school taxes in our community is $20.35. So, what that means is, if you have a $100,000 home, in $100,000, there are $100,000, which means your taxes are 100 times this 20.35. That would be your annual school tax payment. So, now, let's go back and try to determine how the school district made a representation that on a $100,000 assessed value, it would cost $20 for 20 years or $400 total. So, if you were to take the tax warrant and divide it by 20.35, which is the cost per thousand, there would be a total of $1,724,815,000. Okay, don't forget, cost per thousand. So, this is an expression of cost per thousand. So, in order to get to the actual tax levy that produces this number, since it's per thousand, we're just going to add three zeros to this number. So, the total taxable value for the town of New Paltz, plus Asopus in Rochester, and the other towns that are part of our school district, the taxable value is $1,724,815,000. This is my calculation. And I may be off by a couple of million dollars, but let's see where this goes. So, if this is the total assessed value, and by the way, the total assessed value of the town of New Paltz taxable value is about $1.1 million. So, when you add Gardner and the other districts, it's about $1,724,000. All right, so now, let's express that number in terms of a cost per $100,000. So, if we were to take this number, which is the total taxable value of the school district, and divide it by $100,000, because that's what the school district is saying in their literature, cost per $100,000, there are a total of $17,248,000, which are part of this number. So, once again, $17,248,000 make up that. All right? So, this is the number we're concerned about, because this is the expression of the $100,000 that's referred to in the school district's literature. That's the total we have in the school district. So, let's see, if we took that number, multiplied it by $20, that would be $344,963. And then, for 20 years, so, there would be a total raised of $6,899,260. If the school district's statement is true, this is the amount of money that is raised from their statement, which is $20 per $100,000 for 20 years by everybody in the school district. This is not enough money to retire the taxpayer's portion of a $71 million liability bond. All right, so let's look at what the reality is. So, the district says, for each $100,000, there's $400,000 you have to pay over the life of the loan. But if the school district's share of the debt is $35 million, don't forget, there's several assumptions that were made here in terms of how much state aid we're going to get. If the amount of state aid goes down, the taxpayer portion goes up. And if you take the taxpayer portion on an annual basis and multiply it by the number of years that the bond will, will live or survive, you're going to come up with these numbers. So, assuming that the taxpayer's share is $35 million, if you divide it by the $17,248,000, it's going to be $2,065 per $100,000, not, not 20. Actually, it's, it's going to be 200, $2,065 instead of 400, because this doesn't involve a further breakdown. So, what I'm showing to you is, assuming that the local share is $38 million, then the cost per $100,000 for the, for the life of the bond, the 20 years, is $2,214. And if we have to pay $41 million on the bond, it's going to be $2,382. My point is, how can the school district say that for each $100,000, for the life of the bond, it's only going to cost $400, when I do a calculation, and it can be anywhere between $2,065 and $2,382? That's just disingenuous. Somebody didn't do the math. You can't pay for a project that is valued at $71 million by paying $6,899,000. It just doesn't work. So, I want you to think about this slide, and what I want to do is summarize next. I know that the numbers that I've just talked to you about can be confusing. The reason why I spent the time I did to do the calculations was to help everybody understand what the actual cost of this project would be to the community. But, that doesn't mean that, that things don't have to be done in the schools. They do. The school district has identified basic infrastructure that needs to be done. The middle school is a 1930's building. One of the tenants of the facility's master plan, I believe it's on page six, says that, you know, that the school board decided that sustainability was a key tenant of the facility's plan. In other words, they wanted to preserve the middle school as an example, quote, "for others." I guess the point that I want to make is that somebody else should come in and repurpose the older structure at the middle school, but not at taxpayer expense. Perhaps a private company or entity can come in and afford to be able to do that. What I'm trying to explain to you today is that not only do the schools have infrastructure needs, but the town and village have infrastructure needs, the college has infrastructure needs. We all have, we have all these infrastructure needs that are especially pressing right now. And so, we need to have a plan for how to solve these problems. And there's actually hope for it. As you know, the school, the college is trying to build a rather large dormitory project and do it on the backs of taxpayers. And we at the town board are resisting that, and, and we don't think it's fair that a big, multi-billion dollar corporation comes into our community and pays 25 to 30% of what we all pay. If Wilmerite paid their normal taxes on their project, it would help the school district, the town, the county. It would help all of us finance the infrastructure that we need. There are also projects on the drawing board, Wildberry Lodge, the Hampton Inn, CVS. There are other projects that are coming to the forefront now that will increase our tax base. But what we have to do is, we shouldn't spend any money on anything until we devise a plan for the entire community that, that calls for discussions among town board members, school board officials, and college officials, to identify what we need to do, perhaps collectively, and then actually project out when the town, when the school, when the college, when the village can afford to pay for these things. So, what I'm saying to you is, let's not just ignore what our schools need, but let's build in a manner that's the most efficient. And I believe that three or four years from now, we will be in a much better position if these projects come online and start paying taxes to finance infrastructure builds. Now, I personally don't believe that we should be taking $35 million of taxpayer money and putting it into a building that the school district's own appraisers say is worth $5 million. Governor Cuomo has announced that there is a special tax plan that's available in New York State. It's actually the law. And what it does, it's, it's trying to encourage companies to return from overseas and settle in New York. And so, he's created a tax-free zone that is, extends a mile out from the perimeter of the SUNY campus. And what that means to you is that if any business comes into town and locates within that one-mile perimeter outside of the SUNY campus, and offers a, a business model that somehow ties into the educational model that the school has, for example, the school, the SUNY school has an engineering program. If this were a 3D printing company, they could come into our community and, under the governor's plan, not pay real property taxes for 10 years on that property they occupy, and their employees would not pay state income taxes for 10 years. So, this has the potential of a very dramatic detriment on our potential to develop tax ratables for our community. So, my suggestion would be that we should designate the middle school property as a tax-free zone within the governor's initiative. What will that do? Well, because it's already off the tax rolls, it wouldn't be a further burden to the community initially. And then, after the 10-year period, whatever business that came and located to our area, like 3D printing, would begin paying taxes again. Perhaps it's more efficient, especially in a community that believes deeply in green technology, to build an addition onto the existing high school. The addition will optimize the space in terms of efficiency. It might be a net-zero energy project. It might cost you a little bit more, but you'll be building for 100 years and not for 20 years. And I think that's what we're doing here with the middle school. We're not building for 100 years. According to the facility's plan, when they complete the addition and the repairs of the middle school, it will restore the building to just good condition. And we all know that that building is not an energy-efficient building. So, why don't we set an example for others by believing firmly and implementing our desire to be a net-green community? So, my suggestion is that we take our money in the future and create building structures that are highly efficient, that serve the community in general. Take the middle school, designate it as a tax-free zone. Bring in business. These businesses will bring in higher-paid employees. And what better way to get to work than to walk to work from, from wherever you lived in the village to perhaps your office built on the middle school property? That's just my suggestion. But overall, we need to sit down and devise a strategy for our infrastructure needs, and, and then tie those needs into what ratables we'll be generating from these projects going forward, and then come up with plans together. The school district can't do their own thing by themselves anymore. The town can't do their own thing. The school district can't do their own thing. The college can't do their own thing. We have to work collectively. So, I'm suggesting that this particular bond project, I will be personally voting no on it, because I believe there are better alternatives. The numbers that the school district has put out aren't completely accurate. The way they're financing the project doesn't make sense. And in the final analysis, it doesn't make sense to spend $35 million on a building that's only worth $5 million. So, this is what I have to say today. Thank you for spending the time listening to this. And if you have any questions, I'll be out in the community.